All right, well, it looks like we're mostly in here. I'm Mark Hyam, I'm director of Peace Works. Peace Works is one of the eight organizations co-sponsoring this event tonight. And on behalf of all eight, I want to welcome you to what I think is our fifth annual city council candidate forum. It's either the fifth or sixth, I think it's fifth. And it's our second annual school board candidate forum. So, we're excited to be able to do both. And given that the other city board race was uncontested, it was easier to fit everything into one night. We do have all three city council candidates here right now. And beyond that, I just want to say a couple things about the format. This is not a debate, it's a forum. So, it's not like there's going to be a back and forth between these two guys, or Pat, or anybody else. Basically, we've given them the questions in advance. They know what we're going to be addressing. They've been asked to prepare it and to present it in a relatively short interval for each thing that's specified. That's where Emily comes in as a timekeeper. So, basically, we'll start off, the first one with Mark over here. And we'll go across this way. When we get to the second question, Pat, you'll get to go first, and we'll go back that way. And we'll do that until we run out of questions. Citizens Climate Lobby of Columbia, Climate Leaders at Mizzou, otherwise known as CLAM, Climate Reality Project, Columbia Bloom County League of Women Voters, Mid-Missouri Peace Works, Hostage Group Sierra Club, Renew Missouri, and the Sunrise Movement Como. And lots of good groups. We're really pleased to have everybody's participation. And the questions will be asked by members of those groups. So, I'm going to call upon James Owen right now to offer up the first question to the city council candidates. James?
Thank you, Mark. Good evening. Thank you not only for attending, but also thank you for your willingness to serve and to sacrifice your time and everything else you have to do to run for office. We applaud you for that. The first question we have is from Renew Missouri. We are a nonprofit based here in Columbia. We work all over the state with municipalities and states with the state government on renewable energy and energy efficiency issues. First question, I think we have three minutes total for that?
Yes.
Okay, three minutes total for that. Now that the city council has taken the bold step of laying out a climate action and adaptation plan, what do you see as what needs to be done next during your term, at the very least, to make this plan a reality?
I'll start with you, Martin. Well, basically, what I perceive is that to make the plan a reality, first of all, you got to get everybody to buy in, okay? You know, excuse me, I was talking about this earlier. You bet you got to get everybody to buy in. And what I mean by that is, certain economic levels already have bought into the idea. If you have a certain income wage, or you're comfortable in your environment, you've already bought in. We have to figure out how to make the, you know, the lower mid-range and the lower income, figure out how to buy in also, because it does benefit them. You see, as far as, you know, having a, you know, as far as climate change goes, you know, as far as how it looks, it does benefit them. And so, we have to figure out how to make the plan a plan where, you know, not necessarily one size fits all, but how it can fit everybody according to their situation. So that that way, they will be, if you can get people involved in it and make it personal, people generally will go for it. And so, the way I perceive it is that you would have to get everybody to buy in, get them to understand within their own economic realms the benefit that they can have for it, and then also make it economical. Because some things that have to do with environmental issues and climate change, it has a high startup cost in the front, and then, over time, it decreases. And so, you have to figure out how to make it economical, so that that way, it'd be feasible and beneficial and socially beneficial for everybody to partake of it and see, and everybody see the benefits of it at one time. Thank you. Greg Pearson?
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Greg Pearson. I'm 18 years old, and I'm a freshman at the University of Missouri. I understand, and I want to echo a lot of what you've already said about the importance of this issue, because it really is the existential crisis facing our nation, our globe, and our planet in general. The thing about it is that it's not going away. It's something that's not going to just solve itself, and we need to solve it now. And if it's going to get solved, it's going to be my generation that solves it, because we're the ones that are going to have to live with the consequences the most. So, I believe that it is our imperative duty to do something about it now. And as Mr. Hyam already said, our national leadership is failing us on this issue. We need action, and we're not getting any. So, it is an even greater responsibility for ourselves as individuals, but also as a city, to be a national and a global leader in change. And I just want to commend the City of Columbia for laying out such a comprehensive and actionable plan, the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan already. Because it's really the first step in us becoming national and global leaders on this issue. So, I think that the process that the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan was developed through was very comprehensive and took into account a lot of different perspectives. And I think that's really important. But now, it's time for action. So, the first step in that process for us is going to be completing the funding process and beginning to obtain the funds necessary to go ahead with our first goals in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. That's going to be critical, ensuring that we have buy-in, not just people believing that they can be a part of it, but that we have literal buy-in, that people are willing to contribute to solving this problem. And then, we can move on to some of our first goals. So, obviously, at the top of that list is identifying options for clean fuel and renewable energy and beginning the implementation of those processes that are going to deliver us to that 100% clean and renewable energy by 2050, if not earlier. So, that's the next step that we need to be addressing. I also think there are a number of things that we can implement immediately on a little bit more of an individual level that I would focus on right after taking office, including encouraging walkability and bikability in the community. I walk everywhere I go. I don't have a car here in Columbia. I'm a student, so that's a big part of how I get around. So, that's really important for me. Encouraging recycling and individuals conserving resources on energy. And a decline in private vehicle use is going to be a priority for us as well. I also want, just to mention real quickly, that we have to ensure that we have a continuous evaluation process that prioritizes equity as we put the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan into action, because that's at the top of the list of priorities for all people here in the first ward especially.
Thank you, Greg. Pat Fowler, your turn.
Good evening. My name's Pat Fowler. Thank you for inviting me to participate this evening. So, what would needs to be done next, or first, next, and continuously thereafter is neighborhood equity? In 2017, I had the good fortune to meet a young woman by the name of Destiny Lockford, who was in Columbia visiting. And you all know that sometimes the world comes to Columbia for our benefit. Destiny was speaking as a provocation before a film at True Fals, and she had the year before, at age 16, won the National Goldman Environmental Award for successfully fighting a trash-burning incinerator in her Baltimore neighborhood. I listened to her, I listened to her provocation, and I realized if a 16-year-old had that much clarity about neighborhood equity, I could put my middle-aged feet down and figure out ways to be an advocate for my neighborhood as well. There are a lot of things to like in the CAP plan, lots of them, and I have a list of them. I don't know that I'll have enough time in my couple of minutes. But what's most important is equity and fairness for neighborhoods. So, here are some of the things that I like best about it. These are things that our neighborhoods have been asking for for years. And when I read them in the plan, I saw an opportunity that we've been waiting for. Accelerate the building of sidewalks in areas of high need to fill connectivity gaps. And how many of you agree with me that Clark Lane needs to be one of those priority areas? We had a young person killed in September, walking home from work along Clark Lane, because there were no shoulders and there was poor lighting. That's a climate action adaptation strategy right there. Build a network of on-street protected bike lanes so that we can travel from place to place on our bicycles or in chairs, if that's how we ambulate from place to place. Require residential housing to meet basic energy efficiency standards. We have a reporting system now, but we don't have an enforcement system for that. Update current tree preservation requirements to protect tree root systems. Every time there's a redevelopment in our neighborhood, there's a tree. And sometimes, we lose more than a tree, and we lose old growth trees. And they are a crucial and integral part of our stormwater management system, the one that we don't have, that doesn't involve the city digging up our streets and putting in. I have some concerns about that that are in the CAP plan, including something that says incentivize infill development through alternative code compliance, fee waivers, density bonuses, and it goes on with a number of other things. That's coded language to a central city neighborhood, because that's typically how they redevelop us. We have an opportunity with the Climate Action Plan to work on the issue of segregated housing in our community. And if those incentives are important, then they can be important in the neighborhoods surrounding town, surrounding the city, so we stop the segregation of housing and we make sure that our kids can each walk to a high, successful school rather than having to take a bus to get there. There's also, I'm out of time. Thank you.
James, next question?
Yes, thank you. And our next question is two minutes. What steps are you willing to take as a city, if you're elected, to promote not only a growing percentage of renewables generated energy for Columbia Water &amp; Light, but to provide access for businesses and residences to buy 100% renewables generated power either through purchases from Columbia Water &amp; Light or from a third party with the use of Columbia Water &amp; Light's distribution lines?
So, we own, as you all know, as well as I do, we own our municipal utility, the electric, not generation, because we buy off the grid. But when you have a city that owns its own utilities, there are far fewer layers between us and the management of that utility. We can go to our elected city council members, you go to the city manager, who bring the will of the people forward if they're listening. So, I think we can easily, if there's the will of the people, put in renewable energy into the grid so we can draw off renewable energy off the grid. Now, I have a very simple understanding of electricity, so bear with me. However it gets on the grid, whether it comes under the 40-year contract we have with P. Duddy-Pole, or whether or not it's coming from renewable sources for some of the wind farms that are in northwest Missouri, it comes on the grid and then we pull it off. The power we're pulling off is not literally the renewable power. It's just we bought in to renewable power and pushed it into the grid, and we're pulling power off. We have the ability to change the dynamic of how Columbia acquires that power and where they spend their money. I'm less inclined at this point, unless I hear compelling arguments otherwise, about a third-party purchase agreement where they use our transmission system, because we have a much more direct access to the decision-making processes, because we're a municipal-owned utility and not an investor-owned utility. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think this question has a lot to do with some of the things that have been outlined in the CAP plan already. But I would like to direct our attention to the first energy-related goal set out, which involves increasing local renewable energy generation and procuring renewable electricity, which is really what the fundamentals of what we're talking about here. So, there are a number of strategies already outlined that I think would be very effective at attempting to solve this problem and increasing the ability for us to get to that 100% renewable energy threshold, which includes the strategy involving increasing onsite renewable energy installations, particularly in city buildings and sites where feasible. I think that's a big step that we can take as a city, as a government, to increase our own renewable energy production and use, as well as streamlining and offering expedited permitting for renewable energy installations, so allowing privately-owned buildings and residents to have an easier process to get there themselves. Also, maximizing Columbia Water &amp; Light's renewable energy purchasing and production. And the particular step that we've outlined with that one is including our long-term goals in their long-term, long-range electricity and water resource planning goals. So, making sure that we're on the same page with Columbia Water &amp; Light to ensure that we're all moving in the same direction to get to that threshold, as well as revisiting and adjusting Columbia's renewable energy ordinance to meet climate goals. So, that's something that would be a much easier fix for us right here at the city government level, is removing the 3% rate cap to allow increased investment by Water &amp; Light and renewable energy and codifying through ordinance Columbia Water &amp; Light's responsibility to meet that 100% threshold. So, I think there are a number of steps that have been outlined that I'm hoping that we can effectively implement very quickly upon taking office.
Mark? Yes, can you read that one more time?
Sure. We'll get it out again.
Yeah, it's all good.
Yeah, what steps are you willing to take as a city, if you're elected, to promote not only a growing percentage of renewables generated energy for Columbia Water &amp; Light, but to provide access for businesses and residences to buy 100% renewables generated power either through purchases from the utility directly or through third-party purchases with the use of Columbia Water &amp; Light's distribution lines?
Well, the one is, I don't think that we should go with the third party. I think it puts too many, you know, too many cooks in the kitchen. So, I don't think we ought to do that, because then it can get very muddy real quick, you know? So, I think that that, I would be against that. I mean, I think that the grid we have is good. I think the way it functions is good. We just need to clean it up a little bit. As far as, you know, again, like Mr. Pearson said, is we can, you know, with streamline, streamline how buildings, how buildings, you know, can use renewable energy. Houses, I talked to a developer the other day, and he said that he could make, he could make a house that has almost 0% as far as utilities. But he just has to figure, the city has to make a way to make it affordable. And so, so, there's already, like I've already said, there's already so many things in Columbia that already are in place. We just have to put them together. The puzzle pieces are on the floor scattered around. We just got to put these puzzle pieces together in some, for real, lock-type conversation. And so, you know? Thank you. Our next question's going to be asked by Dick Parker from the League of Women Voters.
The Climate Action and Adaptation Plan includes an objective to achieve 100% clean renewable energy for Columbia Water &amp; Light electric generation by 2035. The Electric Integrated Resource and Master Plan Task Force is exploring three scenarios to achieve 100% clean renewable energy by 2030, 2040, and 2050. What information do you need and what criterion will you use to decide which scenario Columbia should adopt?
Mark, I'll get to go first this time. There is a lot of meat in that question. You know? One and a half minutes, by the way. Oh, okay. Should we answer? Let me explain. Sorry, I didn't know this question. But what information would I need? You would need, you know, I mean, literally, to fix any parts of this. You would need quantifiable information along, you would need quantifiable information along the way that would pertain to every situation that would create renewable energy. So, you would have to have so many different pieces of information to bring it together, to come up with, to stick with the 20, 30, 40, and 50 plan. So, I mean, it just, it would be, it would be not an insurmountable task, but it would be a task that would take a lot of people working together to come up with that.
Yeah, so, when considering what sort of actions and what kind of plan we're going to adopt, I've really identified, kind of boiled it down to three different criteria that I would use. So, the first one, obviously, is going to be time. How quickly can we get this implemented? And if we have a scenario where we can get implemented by 2030, that would be great. But no later than 2035 is identified in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. But also, we want to be able to demonstrate that we're taking immediate action. So, which plan allows for us to go ahead with the steps that we want to be going ahead with our priorities immediately? How can we demonstrate that this is a priority issue for us from day one? So, those two facets of the time aspect. Priority number two has to be cost. What is it going to cost us to move forward? Are we maintaining financial stability and sustainability? Are we prioritizing our actions in the right ways? That we're putting our money in the right places where we can have the best immediate returns and see a long-term impact? As well as, are we, have we secured funding in the right places and have some of that immediate revenue? Finally, as I mentioned before, we have to prioritize equity. If the steps that we're taking do not prioritize equity for all members of our community, we got to reconsider taking it, because that's the top of our issue. So, equity on all issues, and especially this one, is the most important thing in the first ward. So, that's going to be a huge lens that we look through, look at this problem through.
Pat?
Yes. So, council's ability to adopt any one of the three plans that you've identified and establish a series of policies to do that is dependent upon the rate payers. So, we have 47,000 residential rate payers in Columbia. The city has the ability to influence the outcome by how they approach the citizens with those plans. And there's a lot in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan about community-led education programs to bring people along and understand the importance of it. But we have to ask some other questions about how quickly we can move. Are city staff on board with it? Are they running the factory forward or are they running it backward when it comes to switching over to 100% renewables resources? And do we have a groundswell of support to overcome any opposition that exists in city staff? And I'm not telling you something you don't know. If you have experienced where the citizens have a good idea and the city staff has a different idea. So, that's a process right there. Are the city employees at their direction of their supervisors out there encouraging or discouraging the conversation? That requires a close-looking as well. And I want to give one story that I recall from having attended any number of sustainable living pairs over the years. Water &amp; Light used to have some really great demonstrative exhibits that they took to the schools and they showed the kids. The kids then went home and hugged the heck out of their parents whenever they saw their parents exhibiting a behavior that was contrary to the models that they learned about in school. So, social norming and peer pressure have a lot to do with it. And that has a lot to do with the community-led education and input process that the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan includes. And I've got to stop sign. Thank you.
The Columbia City Council passed the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan in June 2019. Transportation currently contributes 27% of Columbia greenhouse gas emissions. The CAAP recommends as a priority strategy to build a thriving public transit system. This is a matter of not only reducing greenhouse gas emissions, but providing an equitable opportunity for everyone in the community to have access to jobs, education, and affordable housing with the transportation to move between home, school, and... The topic of transit in Como touches on many things, from routes, hours, ridership, costs, revenues, how children are transported to school, and more. We would like to hear your thoughts on public transit, including what can be done to reduce overall community transportation greenhouse gas emissions through increased use of buses. We ask this recognizing the current high-carbon footprint per passenger mile that comes from operating a fleet of large fossil-fuel-burning buses that often are transporting very few passengers. Please address the following transit-related items. And here's the first one. Kansas City recently made the decision to make all public transit free starting in 2020. Would you support making such a move for Columbia Transit, why or why not? The second one. Do you see the potential for collaboration between Columbia Transit and the Columbia Public Schools to reduce greenhouse gas emissions? And so, what sort of collaborative effort would you support? Should we also be looking at more cooperation between Columbia Transit and the zoo? Third question. Many have suggested that Columbia Transit operate more electric buses that would reduce fuel consumption and greenhouse gas emissions. Would you support this? And the last question. What more broadly is your vision for Columbia Transit? Do you support Columbia achieving a thriving public transit system? If so, what approach do you believe the community should take to achieve one?
Pat, you get to go first?
Oh, good, okay. I'll try and stay on track with all the different things. This first, the first part of the question, Kansas City recently made the decision. Yes, 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 I think we should go to a fair, free transit system. If you build a bus system in this community that works for the diverse needs of a family, a middle-income family, you will have, so that their kids can get to school, they can get to their games, they can go shopping, they can get to work. You've built a bus system that works for everyone. And we have yet to have the willingness to do that. So, first, let's talk about how it's funded and how we might improve that funding. I have heard suggestions at council meetings of a transit utility fee, where we add it to the bill we already pay, a fee where that takes care of an additional amount of revenue for the transit system. So, right now, I pay a base fee of $15 for my sewer. I pay a base fee for stormwater. I pay an electric fee. What if I paid an additional $15 base fee for a transit utility? That's less money than a pass would be for even a low-income member of our community. And it would generate about an additional $8 million in revenue every year to add to the $8 million of revenue that we already have there. We actually have $9.1 million in revenue, but we're going to take away the fare system, so that may take it down by $1.5 million overall, the way I look at their numbers that they produce. So, we're up to double the funding that we currently have. And then, we can talk about building a robust network of routes that serve more of our population. When we talk about collaboration with the public schools or with our colleges and universities, first, I'd like to find out why so few of our children ride the buses that the Columbia Public School System offers. I live immediately next door to a school. I watch the kiss-and-drop line and the kiss-and-pickup line every day. So, and that happens at other schools, I've observed, if I happen to be over there at either drop-off or pickup time. So, we have these families that, even though we have, and I'm going to be wrong about how many numbers of children we have in our school system, but it's less than half of them ride the bus. But the good news is, the school district has an expansive route system, because they pick up every child within their jurisdiction, whether that child is at the bus stop or not. So, then, we have the question of whether or not we can collaborate well with the university and our other colleges in town. Well, we had an unfortunate circumstance where we were growing ridership on the black and gold lines. And the mayor decided, Mayor McDavid, decided that the apartment complexes up off of Old 63 should pay a fee for every student that got on that bus. And he did it in a heavy-handed manner. And so, they started hiring their own buses or subcontracting that themselves. Then, he went to the university students and the Missouri Students Association and suggested that they should put a fee on the fees they're already paying to fund the bus system. That rollout did not go well. And so, I think we lost a lot of ground in collaboration there. But we could come back to that conversation, treating everyone as equal stakeholders in the discussion, the school district, the university, Stevens College, Columbia College, Moberly Area Community College, and talk about how do we build a bus system that everybody wants to use. As far as Columbia Transit operating more electric buses, I noticed in their budget that they lease many of the electric buses they already have. I think there are eight in the fleet. I'd like to know what happens to the buses that are currently burning fossil fuel. Because if it's our intention to sell them to a community with fewer resources to be able to manage climate action and adaptation in their community, I think that's a really bad idea. What I'd like to see instead is that they dismail the buses, or they swap out different engines for them, or they find some way to adaptively reuse those buses rather than turf our problem with polluting buses to another community. And more broadly, it says, do you support achieving a thriving public transit system? Yes, yes, yes. That makes a difference as far as where we can live, how our kids can get to school, how we can get to work, how we can get more cars off the road. And there's so many benefits to how we could do that if we have the willingness of the community to do so. And it's really about willingness. Other communities have figured this out. We can too. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Yeah? Yes, so, on the first part of the question about Kansas City making their public transit free, so, I also support expanding Columbia Public Transit. I think it's absolutely necessary. I think that includes longer operating times, more accessibility to more residents, and an increased number of passengers. So, we need to, we need to drive engagement with the public, with the public transit system. I think doing so would be effective not only in achieving some of those goals, but also in reducing public vehicle use, which is a significant part of our emissions as a community. And I think that's something that we're really going to need to prioritize in some way. And I think this is a really good, actionable step. And I think this is a really good actionable step to getting there. With an expanded public transit system, at least initially, I think it's difficult to see how that could be completely free to everyone that's using it. But if we're successful in implementing it, a little bit of funding that we can get out of that initially should ultimately lead to a free, affordable public transit system for everybody. And I think that'll be the eventual goal. And I definitely think we can get there. On the second part of the question, collaboration between the schools and the universities, I think we should absolutely be looking to consolidate our greenhouse gas emissions through partnerships and collaboration with some of these other stakeholders in the matter. I, I'm not totally sure what that will look like, but I think a partnership with Columbia Public School Busing could be very effective. I think working with the school board to achieve something like that is something that I'd be really looking forward to doing. My dad serves on the school board back in my hometown in St. Louis. And he, he, I, I've got a lot of experience working with the, with school boards on, on different issues and things like that. So I think that's something that we definitely need to be looking into initially. I think more Mizzou students using the public transit, transit system would increase revenue and increase engagement with other parts of the community. So absolutely, I think that's something we need to look at. Any given day, if I walked a class from my residence hall to an academic building, I might see a dozen shuttles taking students from various locations around town from their apartments back to the dorms or something like that. We have students that live in any residential halls that are off-campus. So things like that, there, there's just tons of them. And they definitely need to be reduced in number and more effectively managed. And I think an effective public transit, transit system could really be the solution to that problem. On the, the third part of the question about more electric buses, I, I absolutely think that the electric vehicles are the future of transportation in this country and around the world. Ultimately, I do think that that would be a worthwhile investment if it's something that we're looking for, increasing electrical, electric vehicles in our fleet. But I think initially it might not be feasible with our investment. I think we might need to build out some other things and look for some other funding options first. We would need to consider some different factors and some different stakeholders in that issue as well. But ultimately, I think that's where we're gonna have to move. I think that's the future of transportation in this country and around the world. So definitely I would support that step eventually. Broadly, in terms of my vision for Columbia Transit, I envision something that's accessible to everybody, that everybody can use, that, that's something that is affordable, that no one feels like this is a burden on their, on their bills, on their having to buy a pass or something like that. I, I hope that we can get to that point. And I envision it being expansive, something that covers everyone in the city, covers a lot of different areas and parts of our city. Increasing engagement, increasing communication and collaboration is absolutely a goal that we're going to be looking for. I believe that Columbia can be a national leader on consolidating our greenhouse gas emissions through an effective public transit system. And I think this would be, as I already mentioned, a very effective step in reducing public, or sorry, reducing private vehicle use, which is gonna be a huge part of reducing our individual greenhouse gas emissions moving forward. So I absolutely support a much broader and much more expansive and accessible and affordable system in the future.
Mark Anderson?
Okay. Of course, I like the Kansas City idea, you know. You know, in, in a perfect world, who wouldn't? But you'd have to, you'd have to really dig into how they came up with that because people still gotta get paid. You see what I'm saying? So you'd have, you'd have to go in and see how they really, really worked that out, you know, to just, everybody get on for free and, and go with it, as far as that goes. You know, because, you know, you are affecting jobs and stuff like that. So you have to really dig into the, into that. As far as the public schools go, they already have some type of collaboration 'cause again, everybody knows I have kids. And so, you know, my son catches the bus for free if you have your, if you have your student ID. So you can, you can, during the school year, if you have your student ID, you can catch the bus for free. So there are some collaborations that are going on. There are some collaborations that are already going on with the school system that is benefiting, you know. I know that if you live within, if you live within a mile of the school system, you know, you have to walk, you know. And so, you know, there, there, that, you know, I'm torn between that because I have, you know, I have younger kids who I don't feel, you know, I feel safe enough within the confines of my neighborhood because a lot of people know them and they walk to school and walk home. But in some situations, not everybody feels that. So, you know, but I know that right now, the Columbia Public School does, do have a collaboration with the, with the city bus system as far as to get kids to and from school. And that, that probably got enacted, uh, that was probably about two years ago when they really started that process. How do I envision this? Okay, one, the city utilities already has a problem with the utility system as it is, okay? So putting a bill on top of that, I, I'm not seeing that right now as being any type of effectiveness. Because if you're already, you know, if you're already struggling a little bit, add the fifteen-dollar bill on, on top of that, you know, because then it comes down to if I, if I, you, you gotta spread that bill amongst everybody in Columbia. Not everybody in Columbia is getting ready to take that bill. That's just point-blank simple. That's just, Columbia, Columbia's a good town. It's a wonderful town to live in, but everybody ain't getting ready to take that hit. That's just not gonna happen. So you have to figure out another way for that to happen. And how I envision this is literally break Columbia down into how, again, I've been marked since this thing started. I'm gonna keep being marked. If you live in a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, you not getting ready to catch no bus. Okay, you just not, okay? You getting ready to catch Uber, your kid's getting ready to catch Uber, somebody else is getting ready to catch Uber. But if you live in a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, you not getting ready to catch no bus. The, the way they need to do it is they need to look at it and lay it out and figure out, you know, probably a hundred-and-fifty-thousand down, you're probably catching the bus, okay? But how to make the bus more effective? Make it rovers, where the buses go out so far, they make rovers, they do different things like that. You can make Columbia buses more effective. But the way you're doing it now, you know, as far as MU goes, I think they ought to keep the shuttles because it, it works for MU, but figure out how to make them shuttles, you know, whether they be electric or some type of more confined. Because you're already running them buses out there and the, and the students are not catching them. And the low-income people actually need them. And, you know, the time is spent this way and not that way. And so, you, you know, people need to get to work, you know what I'm saying? And then y'all got, you know, y'all got the Bird scooters and everything out there. So that's what makes the buses even more emptier. So eventually, having buses around MU is, is, is really, is so cost ineffective, you know what I'm saying? Because you got Bird scooters, y'all, you have rollerblades, you bike. So I mean, like literally having a bus out there on MU is almost, it's almost crazy. You know, I mean, for it to be a cost-effective. So, oh, that's my time.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to ask Lynn Malli to offer the next question on behalf of Climate Reality Project.
So thank you all for being here. This is sort of a follow-up question to Jan's. It's also about vehicle emissions. It's a question with a two-minute answer. So vehicle emissions are significant polluters of the air as well as big contributors to greenhouse gas emissions. According to the U.S. Department of Energy, vehicles create almost sixty million tons of CO2 each year while idling, thirty million of that by cars. Every year, Americans waste three billion gallons of fuel idling their cars. I'm sorry, idling their vehicles, and there's quite a distinction there. The Columbia Climate Action and Adaptation Plan recommends as a priority action to implement and enforce anti-idling policies in Columbia. Would you support anti-idling policies? And if so, what policies would you like to be implemented?
Okay, so this is one of them, what I call, you know, brain junk information I picked up. Japan has been doing this for twenty years. That if you pull up to a stop sign, they, you have to turn off your car. If you, if you look at the, at the information that's out there, Japan, China have been doing this for twenty years, where if you pull up to a stop sign, you gotta turn your car off and let it idle. And then I seen a piece about, I think it's in New York, the Bronx, or somewhere up there, to where now they got, like literally, idling police. So they, they walk up, and I think this is a little too much, but it's somewhere in between all of that. But if you, if your car is idling too long, three minutes, they take a video of it and then they take a video of the car, the license plates and all like that, and then they send you a ticket. And now, up there, the ticket was like three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, okay? But, you know, something like that, you know, I mean, we need to decrease them. It, it is going to take self-responsibility, you know. But it is possible to lessen greenhouse emissions, but to fine people three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that's probably a little too much. But there is places around the world who does it. And, and it's very beneficial and you can see the results in the climate where they live at. And I would say Japan, China is probably one of the, one of the ones that I've heard of a long time ago that were already dealing with this. And, and their emissions went down. But they also did other things along with bringing emissions down. They turned off the cars, but then they planted trees, you know. You know, so you, you know, almost, you can't have one without the other. So yes, they turned off the cars and all that, but then they did a massive expansion of planting trees and doing more environmental stuff. And that brought it down, the overall, yeah, uh, gas emissions and overall climate heat around us, around that area, down. So, I mean, so, you know, it, it's a process of steps.
Thank you, Martin.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I would absolutely support anti-idling policies. I think especially those that can be implemented to, to stop idling in buses. So that would obviously require some collaboration with the Columbia Public Schools if we've already, as we've already discussed a little bit. And the state already encourages that school districts implement anti-idling policies for their buses. There are some sample policies that are pretty attainable and things that we could implement very quickly, I think. And honestly, that seems like a, a pretty, a step that makes a lot of sense to do right away. So absolutely, I'd support that. It also has a lot to do, as we've already discussed, with enhancements to our public transit system. So if we're able to build a, a broader network of public transit, I think that'll be a little bit more feasible for us. However, I, I think we also need to be looking at a reduction in the overall use of private vehicles, as I've mentioned several times. Because as you mentioned, that's half of all of our idling emissions come from our private vehicles. I walk and bike everywhere, like I mentioned. I, I live on campus. I, I have that luxury a little bit to be able to do that. And I wanna see that be an option for more people. I also wanna see public transit be an option for more residents. The, the scooters that you mentioned are not actually on campus or anywhere else anymore. Contracted with the city, or not our contract, the city's contract with, with Bird, the company that was doing that ran up, ran out. So those aren't around anymore, much to the chagrin of a lot of students. I found to be a little bit of a nuisance, but that's a, that's a different, different discussion. But options for walkability and bikability and public transit and things like that that reduce our use of private vehicles, which would be a huge step in reducing our vehicle emissions overall, would definitely be something that I would...
Great. Thank you for the question. I think as a policy matter, it's a great idea to have a policy about that and to also to social norm that, so that people understand the importance of it. As far as enforcement goes in the city of Columbia, we have lots and lots of ordinances that we cannot enforce now. If you live in a neighborhood adjacent to the football stadium or lots of other places in town, you know the city has ordinances they are unable to enforce or that they lack the willingness to enforce. So putting another enforcement mechanism on the books seems counterproductive for the citizens. However, you can put signage up. And again, let's go back to the example of the parents that line up the kiss-and-drop, pick-up-and-drop or pick-up-and-kiss line that lines up outside of Jefferson Middle School. Those parents could be looking at a series of signs that say, "While you're waiting for your student, are you aware that your car is pumping out this many toxic contaminants that your student and their friends are breathing in as they walk down the sidewalk to your car?" And then if you continue to idle at that rate, say you whatever time or mechanism you want to, so that they can easily do the math, and you're wasting X number of gallons of fuel if you do this throughout the entire school year. That's the kind of peer pressure and social model, social norming that I think would make a difference for our young people. It's great for us to have aspirational goals because nothing gets done without them. So to put out an aspirational goal that we will stop leaving our cars running when we are parked or sitting in one location for any amount of time, particularly when we're doing things like picking up our children or waiting for the, the line that where you put the stuff that, you know, the bank thing. My dog loves to go to the bank because there's a biscuit that comes out of a magic machine that drops down in a hydraulic tube. But while you're waiting there to keep your car running versus turning your car off. These are always really good ideas to bring to the public's attention the incremental things they can do every day to make a difference. And I'm out of time. Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Our last question in this portion of our program tonight with the city council candidates is going to be shared by Erica Heskey from Peaceworks.
Okay, you have three minutes to answer this question. Food production, processing, distribution, and preparation, as well as food waste, all have significant climate footprints. Many variables are in play regarding our food footprint, including where and how food is produced, as well as dietary choices. The cap addresses local food production and reducing food waste in the health, safety, and well-being section, as well as briefly in the natural resources appendix. Do you think the city should be taking action in this area to promote local food and/or address any other aspects of the climate impact of how we feed ourselves? Are there specific policies or actions you'd like to be pursued, see pursued?
Pat, you scored on? The city does have policies driven largely by the young who started the Columbia Center for Urban Agriculture and their partnership with Parks and Recreation, in that they opened up lots of parkland in the city for urban gardens or urban farms. And so that's a great example of how there can be collaboration. I would rely heavily on the parties that have created a successful year-round farmers' market out at the old fairgrounds, CCUA and Sustainable Farms in Communities, Columbia Farmers Market, to bring forward policies that they think would make a difference in focusing our consumption on locally-created foods. The other thing that we could do, and I, I think about where the city chooses to spend its money. So a couple of years ago, and I don't remember exactly when, but they took some of the money out of the enterprise funds and they used it to build or purchase a transload terminal for the Colt Railroad in Centralia. I don't remember how much that cost. But I know that one of the obstacles for local food production here is a facility to consolidate that production so it can then be sold to larger institutional customers. And so think about ways in which the city could perhaps spend some of that enterprise funds to create that hub so that locally-grown foods could then be consolidated and sold to the Columbia Public Schools, which has a much larger, larger install base, the Department of Corrections, the University of Missouri. So there's lots of options there. As far as deciding how those policies could be brought forward, I would rely on those very organizations that are doing an outstanding job right now. Thank you.
Yeah, so, yes, I think we do need to be addressing this aspect of the problem. And, and really, there's no part of the climate crisis that we can afford to put in the backseat here. We, we need to be addressing all of it concurrently and all of it effectively. So we absolutely need to be reevaluating our consumption habits and our waste habits in particular. So I think a big thing that we need to be looking at here is recycling and composting options for reducing waste. So in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, there are several strategies outlined in the waste section that involve recycling and composting, particularly expanding composting participation and operation, which involves, which involves reducing trash and things like that. That'll be really effective for us reducing that kind of waste. I know my family composts something that we recently started to do. My dad's all up in arms about it, which I think is great because it really does seem to be the future of what we're going to be doing to reducing waste. Recycling is also very effective, but, but it is something that's sort of becoming the norm and we need to be doing more than just recycling. But at this point, recycling, and as it's outlined in the plan, should be required and even incentivized. And I think that that would be really effective as long as we have a little bit more education around how to recycle effectively, what kinds of things can be recycled, and some clear policies about enforcing that and ensuring that everyone's participating. Because not all things can be recycled. Some things can only be recycled in certain ways. Some things can be composted instead of thrown away and things like that. So having some clear policies and educating the public, that's something we've... So having some clear policies and educating the public, that's something we've tried to do a little bit on campus already, is increasing students' awareness of what kinds of things can be recycled and where. So that's something that I think we should definitely consider doing. Requiring it is the key there, making sure that everybody's participating. And as we've talked about in the past, some literal buy-in to what's going on, because that's going to reduce our waste consumption as a community and also the costs associated with that kind of thing. But then there are a number of other things, as you've sort of mentioned briefly, that involve encouraging local food production, which I think is definitely something that we need to consider. Along with that, what are, we need to be understanding the impacts of large-scale food distribution, packaging, and plastic consumption are things that go along with that. So ensuring that the public, once again, is educated about these things, the impact that they can have, and how, as we've mentioned many, many times, our individual choices impact climate and impact this crisis that we're experiencing now. And how can we do a really good job of effectively reducing our waste, reducing our consumption of our natural resources, eating and consuming electricity and things like that in an effective way? And that's really how we get the ball rolling on solving such an existential crisis.
Thank you, Greg. Mark, your last word here.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Greg. I mean, you know, it, it, it's just about literally education. I mean, if you want people to buy into, you know, as far as food waste and how to, you know, and how to properly, I mean, it's buy-in education. Because I look at it, you know, some of these things, some of these things are what I call economic challenges. So what I mean by economic challenges is this, is that if you are doing pretty good in life, it's not a challenge for you. But if you're kind of hanging in in life, that's an economic challenge. And then when he says that, you know, enforcement, enforcement generally in Columbia means fine. So, you know, so you have, you have to dance very carefully, because, you know, to do it across the board, absolutely, it needs to be done. You know, everybody, no matter what your income is, can figure out a way to, you know, understand the breakdown of how to recycle. But to enforce it with a fine or something like that, it would do more harm than good. You know, even though over the long run, it would do good because it would break down the cost and all like that. And then as far as, excuse me, as far as, when they talk about, excuse me, when they're talking about doing big, big, you know, big, big food distribution, I believe that they're already trying to figure out how to create bigger kitchens to be able to do bigger production of things. So I think in, in some areas, that part is already in the infancy of already being started. So again, like I always said, that some things in Columbia are already being done, it's just an information breakdown that is not getting out to everybody. And so, so yes, I think it can be done, enforcement, what does that enforcement look like? Yes, everybody needs to recycle, and you need to be educated on what to recycle and how to recycle. But absolutely, it is 100% a benefit for the CAP situation, for the CAP, the way it is written, but we need a whole bunch of education going forward. We need to educate before we, before we implement. That's kind of the way it is.
Well, I want to thank the three of you, and I think we could all offer up a little round of applause, responses to the questions, and I wish all three of you the best of luck on Election Day, which is April 7th. Voters get to pick one of the three good people up here, and that person will be on the council. I hope the others will be engaged in other ways.